The hour of 6:30 having passed, I will call to order the Common Council Meeting of Tuesday, October 11, 2022, and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Alder Foster.
Here.
Alder Foster is present. Alder Harrington McKinney. Alder Harrington McKinney is present. Alder Heck. Heck is present. Alder Miyazi. Alder Miyazi is present. Alder Paulson.
Here.
Alder Paulson is present. Alder Fair. Alder Fair is present. Alder Tischler. Alder Tischler is present. Alder Verveer. Alder Verveer is present. Alder Vidiver. Alder Vidiver is present. Alder Wahelia. Alder Wahelia is present. Alder Bennett. Alder Bennett is present. Alder Carter. Alder Carter is present. Alder Conklin. Alder Conklin is present. Alder Curry. Sorry, Vice President Curry. Thank you. Vice President Curry is present. Alder Figueroa Cole. Alder Figueroa Cole is present. And Alder Evers. Alder Evers is present. Madam Mayor, we have quorum.
Thank you. Just thank you all for getting us past the magic number of 15 so that we can adopt 15 vote items. And just remind us all that regardless of our role, whether we are on the council, on staff, here as residents wanting to speak or observe, to please assume good intentions, be kind, and to refrain from using profanity in your remarks. We'll start with a number of honoring resolutions. Our first item is Item 1, Legisstar 73881. And for this, I will turn it over to Alder Bennett.
Whereas according to the National Domestic Violence Hotline, domestic violence or intimate partner violence is a quote "pattern of behaviors used by one partner to maintain power and control over another partner in an intimate relationship." And whereas NISVS data reports that on average nearly 20 people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner in the United States, which equates to more than 10 million people per year. And whereas intimate partner violence accounts for 15% of all violent crime. And whereas 1 in 2 female murder victims and 1 in 13 male murder victims are killed by an intimate partner. And whereas in 2019, there was, there were 52 domestic partner homicides in Wisconsin. 56% of these homicides were committed with a firearm. And whereas in a 2015 study found that 1 in 4 women at the University of Wisconsin-Madison experienced sexual assault since entering college. And whereas according to the 2022 UWPD Annual Security and Fire Safety Report, rapes on campus have doubled. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Madison, Common Council, and Mayor recognize October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Be it further resolved that throughout the month of October, the City of Madison, along with communities across the country, will mourn for those whose lives were taken by domestic violence. Celebrate the tremendous progress of victim advocates have been over the years and connect with one another with a true sense of unity to end domestic violence.
Thank you, Alder. And we have to receive the proclamation Shannon Berry from Daze. Shannon? We'll get there. Please.
Can you hear me? Okay. Okay. I know I have my big tall girl, big girl shoes on, so I wasn't sure if I was too high. So I just, I want to thank Alder Bennett and all of the Alders on the Common Council, as well as Mayor Rhodes Conway for this wonderful resolution honoring and recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Unfortunately, as many of you already know, intimate partner violence is still an issue that carries a great stigma with it that keeps people from coming forward and getting the help that they need. And this resolution reminds those in our community living with abuse that their city stands with them, believes them, and supports them. At Daze, we always, we often say that intimate partner violence is not a women's issue or a men's issue. It is a community issue and therefore requires community solutions. And we are so grateful at Daze to have so many incredible community partners, such as the YWCA, Unidos Against Domestic Violence, Freedom, Inc., as well as others, but also to have the city, the council, and the mayor as partners in this work. And speaking of that partnership, we are grateful for the many ways in which we work with the city, and we look forward to continuing that work as we continue to grow and adapt to the ever-changing needs of our clients and our community. Just one example of that adaptation that I wanted to mention to you all tonight is our brand-new 24/7 text line. That number is 608-420-4638, which comes in response to the pandemic where we saw firsthand that not everyone is safer at home. So we're hoping that this will provide another point of access for those who may be in a situation where they cannot make a safe phone call. So I want to thank you all again for this wonderful resolution to help raise awareness and for all that you do in service to our city. You're very appreciated by all of us at Daze. So thank you.
Shannon, before you leave, give us that text number again so we can all share it with anybody who might need it.
And please, if you want to include it on your Alder blogs, that would be great. It is 608-420-4638. That is answered 24/7 by a live human being, a crisis intervention advocate at Daze. So please help us spread the word. Thank you all.
Let's give Shannon a big round of applause. Thank you. So we're going to take that as moved by Alder Bennett and seconded by Alder Curry with her permission. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, record a unanimous vote in favor. And we will move on to Item 2, which is Legisstar 73963. And it's my honor to read this honoring resolution proclaiming October 15, 2022, as White Cane Safety Day in the City of Madison. Whereas blindness and severe visual impairment affect approximately 100,000 Wisconsin residents. And whereas the majority of these persons use travel aids, such as a white cane or a service animal, to get around public streets and sidewalks and places of public accommodation. And whereas these travel aids are universally recognized as symbols representing vision loss. And whereas Wisconsin's White Cane Law requires that motorists come to a full stop before approaching closer than 10 feet to a pedestrian who is using a white cane or a service animal. And whereas greater awareness of the White Cane Law leads to safer, more attentive driving in general, enhancing the safety of all pedestrians, including children, elders, and people with disabilities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and common council do hereby proclaim October 15, 2022, as White Cane Safety Day in the City of Madison, and acknowledge the importance of pedestrian safety year-round. And we will take that as moved by Alder Curry and seconded by Alder Conklin. And I believe we have Denise Jess with us to accept virtually.
I am here.
Denise, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this virtual option. I am most grateful for it. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am Denise Jess. I'm the Executive Director of the Wisconsin Council of the Blind and Visually Impaired. I'm also proud to serve on the city's Transportation Commission, and I am a person who lives with significant vision loss. I just want to begin by commending this body and both TPPB and TC for, and city staff for exceptional work in, in working towards creating safe streets for all users, all modalities, all abilities. Vision Zero and the High Injury Network and Safe Streets Madison, all such profound work so that everyone has more equitable access to our streets to get to work, to get to medical appointments, to be able to interact with family, to contribute to the community. Safe streets are an equity issue, and the inclusion, full inclusion of people with disabilities is profoundly important. And being, being able to do work around the state, I really see our city's work as a model, and I'm so proud to be a resident of Madison and to work on these issues. We have folks with vision loss in every single neighborhood in this city. So there are definitely folks like me who have lived with vision loss since birth. And our fastest-growing population of folks with significant vision loss are our older adults who experience significant changes in vision due to macular degeneration, or glaucoma, or related to diabetes. So as you are making really critical decisions about quality of life in the City of Madison, I really want to invite you to remember that throughout every single district live folks with vision loss and how critical it is for us to be able to make safe passage on our city streets. So not only remembering White Cane Day, but holding pedestrian safety in the forefront in all of that decision-making. So again, thank you so much for the resolution. We are most grateful. And thank you so much, city staff and Alders and Mayor, for your incredible work in this area.
Thank you, Denise, and thanks for joining us tonight. So it has been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor. And thank you again for your work, Denise. I don't know if you can hear it, but you're getting a round of applause. All right, that takes us to Item 3, which is Legisstar 74020, proclaiming October 2022 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October 13, 2022, as Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day, and October 21, 2022, as National Mammography Day. We don't have anyone here to receive this proclamation, so we will take this as moved by Alder Curry and seconded by Alder Conklin. Thank you. So moved and seconded, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that item is adopted. And that takes us to Item Number 4, which is Legisstar 74105. And I will ask Alder Wahilahi to begin reading.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native Nations, of the United Nations International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day began in commemoration of 500 years of survival and renewal of Indigenous nations in the face of genocide, colonialization, political, religious, and cultural repression. And whereas the City of Madison recognizes the Indigenous peoples of this hemisphere have lived in, on this land since time immemorial, and the city recognizes the fact that Madison is built upon the homelands of the Indigenous people of this region. And whereas the Indigenous culture was disrupted and destroyed in Madison, as in all parts of the hemisphere, and yet Indigenous people survive and continues to resist against current injustices and oppression. And whereas the City of Madison will continue to support Indigenous nations' struggles for social and environmental justice, religious freedom, tribal sovereignty, and equity. And I'll have Alder Tischler finish that.
And whereas the City of Madison honors our country's indigenous roots and history and seeks with this celebration to bring greater understanding to the people of Madison regarding Indigenous cultures and the enormous contributions they have made and continue to make to our nation and to the City of Madison. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and common council of the City of Madison do hereby affirm and celebrate Madison, October 10, 2022, as Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Thank you. And we have Dan Brown here to accept the proclamation.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I had a brief conversation with one of your Alders, JL. She's our district Alder. She advised me that your, your agenda was quite, quite small tonight, so indulge me for the next hour, if you would. No, I'm kidding, of course. I want to say thank you very much from, you know, the bottom of my heart, and really humbled and honored to have received this. I represent Ho-Chunk Gaming Madison as the executive manager there, but I'm also recognizing the community as, as a, I hesitate to say, a community leader. And so, you know, we get these sorts of, these sorts of incredible gestures coming our way, and I, and I, you know, accept this on behalf of Indigenous people, you know, throughout, throughout this continent. And just say thank you to each and every one of you for, you know, for this type of gesture. You know, I guess I'd be remiss without at least mentioning the fact that the City of Madison, over the course of the last seven years, has, you know, just continued to be far more accepting, I guess, perhaps, and understanding and sort of open about the Ho-Chunk people, the Aboriginal people of this, of this area. And I know this is an Indigenous thing in general, but I just want to say that the progress that, that we've made together as a community, as a Ho-Chunk community, as a community at large, with regard to just accepting one another. There's a Ho-Chunk Day that this, that this, you know, the council established the day after Thanksgiving. And again, I'd be remiss without, without mentioning that and just want to express my deep appreciation for, for this gesture tonight. It's, it's, it's a big deal. You know, it's not something that's just a very small gesture. I'm saying gesture, but all these types of things help in moving that needle and bringing us together. The awareness that, you know, these kinds of things do for Indigenous people is, is so profound and helps us so greatly as we move towards, you know, a more equity and, and, you know, just opportunity for us just to work together. Again, the awareness is, it can't be overstated. I just want to thank you so much for, for this proclamation. Last thing, it won't be an hour, but the last thing I wanted to say was acknowledge Missy, Missy Tracy, here's a tribal member working with me for the past seven years, and without her outreach, she spearheaded tremendous outreach within this community. And I didn't want to go without saying a big thank and acknowledgement to her. With that, I'll close for the night, and thank you all very much. Thank you, Mayor.
I'll just make it brief and say thank you. Thank you, Dan. Thank you to the Common Council, all of the Alders, the mayor, this entire community. I just want to commend the city for bringing the Indigenous people out of the shadows, not only here, with acknowledgement of our history, as well as Indigenous people all over the globe. I am proud to serve as a board member on the Mundo Esperanza Board, which is sister city with Costco Peru and Madison, Wisconsin. So just commend you for all of the efforts that you are making. As Dan said, that it really does make a difference. So just with deep gratitude and appreciation to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you both, and thank you for your work in the community. I do want to remind folks that during the heart of the pandemic, we started flying the Ho-Chunk flag over the Madison Municipal Building, a flag that we received in exchange from President White Eagle of the Ho-Chunk Nation. And I made that decision because we, it is not just one or two days a year that we exist on Ho-Chunk land, it's every single day of the year, and we need to remember that every single day of the year. So we'll continue to fly that flag, and we'll continue to make these gestures in hopes that it brings our peoples closer together. Thank you. All right, we're going to take that as moved by Alder Wahilahi and seconded by Alder Tischler, if that's all right. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record that unanimous vote. And then we will come to disclosures and recusals. Are there any disclosures or recusals on any of the items on tonight's agenda? Seeing, oh, Alder Vidiver, sorry.
Item 117, 74068, by an employee of the Department of Health Services.
All right, and then Alder Carter?
Number 62, Item 73502. I'm on the porch light board.
Thank you. Any other disclosures or recusals on tonight's agenda? Seeing none. I'm going to ask if there is any objection to us taking up Item 56 at this time. It's the confirmation hearing that is before us tonight. Seeing no objection, we'll go to Item 56, which is Legisstar 73115, in which I am proud to submit the appointment of Gregory P. Michaels for confirmation of a five-year, an additional five-year term as the library director. And Greg is here with us tonight. If I can get a motion, please, Alder Curry. To approve? Moved and seconded to confirm. Are there questions? Would you like to drag Greg up here and have him speak to us? Or I think, is that, there you go, Greg.
Thank you. It's, it's truly, I can remember back to my initial confirmation, which actually happened on a very warm August day across the street in Room 260 at that time, because this chamber was occupied. Mayor Satia was an Alder at the time, and I think Alder Verveer was, was there as well. And there was a mayor in a Hawaiian shirt and sandals and jeans. I, I said, I think I've found a place I'm going to greatly enjoy. And I have. And I really consider it, I said it then, and I'll say it again, consider it a privilege to provide leadership to Madison Public Library. It's just a fantastic institution for the city, and you've got a world-class staff and operation to provide these services. So it's truly an honor to lead that organization for the City of Madison. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had the privilege of serving on the library board for the first probably three terms. And Greg, I just want you to just quickly talk about your commitment in moving the library toward equity and inclusion and what the library stands for. Because I'd just like for, for you to say that. You're so modest, but I really would like to hear that.
Alder McKinney, thank you for that question, and thank you for your service on the library board. It was very impactful with your time there. I, I feel Madison Public Library very, has been very intentional and has shown a deep commitment to equity and moving that forward. Again, I can go back to when I began, and I would do tours of all the libraries, and I had an open house at Goodman South, Madison. And one of the patrons, a black woman, came up to me, and she thanked me and welcomed me to Madison. And she, she just went on of how much she enjoyed Goodman South Library. But she also shared with me at that time, I really would like to see myself here more. And that meant a lot to me at that time. And since that time, we've worked very hard and intentionally to try to reduce barriers and to try to be more inclusive in our hiring, and looking at ways of how our service is delivered in an equitable fashion. And that experience has been, just recently, where we, you know, changed our Sunday hours, locations, to areas of the city that could benefit more from having that access on a weekend. Those little steps, finding new ways of hiring staff so we could be more inclusive. And now I'm proud to say that that staff at South Madison is a 50% BIPOC now. And that woman who met with me early on does see herself now within the staff that works there. So it's, it's something that I want to thank the city for as well, for their support, for HR as well. This isn't done alone. And clearly, the support of the staff that I work with on a daily basis and their level of commitment to make this part of our mission. In fact, within our mission statement is equitable service. So we're very proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to grill our library director. So it has been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous enthusiastic vote to reappoint Greg? Seeing no objection, the motion passes. Congratulations and thank you, Greg. All right, now we can go back to our regularly scheduled order of business. And I will turn to Vice President Curry for the presentation of the consent agenda.
A consent agenda is moved with the recommended action listed for each item on the agenda, including public hearings, except, 1, items which have registrants wishing to speak; 2, items which Alders have separated out for discussion, debate purposes. Agenda items number 6 through 16 are public hearing items. The following items are extra-majority items. Extra-majority vote items will be recorded as unanimous votes unless a roll call or exclusion is requested. Agenda item 42, Legislative File 73481, amending the 2022 operating budget to increase staff for public health Madison and Dane County to expand sexual and reproductive health services. 15 votes required. Agenda item number 59, Legislative File Number 73477, amending the 2022 water utility capital budget to transfer existing budget authority between various major projects and program budgets to reflect current project scope adjustments. 15 votes required. Agenda item number 65, Legislative File Number 73632, amending the 2022 adopted operating budget to fund and authorize the mayor and city clerk to enter into a sole-source contract with local initiative support corporation for the associates in commercial real estate or acre program. 15 votes required. Agenda items with recommendations made from the floor are Agenda Item Number 56, Legislative File Number 73115, submitting the appointment of Gregory P. Michaels for confirmation of a five-year term as the library director. Recommended action is to return to the public library board with recommendation for approval to the common council. Agenda item number 58, Legislative File Number 73450, application to the Dane County Board for exemption from Dane County library tax levied under Section 43.57 Subsection 3 and 43.64 Subsection 2 of those conscience state statutes. Recommended action is to return to the public library board with recommendation for approval to the common council. Agenda item number 62, Legislative File Number 73502, approving the selection of Porchlight Inc. as the operator of a new facility to provide emergency shelter and supportive services to male identifying persons experiencing homelessness, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to enter into any agreements and contracts with Porchlight necessary to fulfill that purpose. Recommended action is to return to the City Development Block Grant Committee with recommendation for approval to the common council. with Recommendation for Approval to the Common Council. All right, so then there's items that are excluded by one request of alders or two due to speakers registered by 6:00 PM on October 11th. Agenda Item Number Nine, Legislative File Number 73471, Amending Table 28L-2 in MGO Section 28.181, and Amending MGO Section 28.206 to Increase Fees was Requested for Removal from Alder Wahili. Agenda Item Twenty, Legislative File Number 72066, Entity Reorganization of Concept Grocers Concepts, Doing Business as Jennifer Street Market. We have a registered speaker. And Agenda Item Sixty One, Legislative File 73500, Extending the Provision of On-Site Services to Users of the Dairy Drive Sheltered Campground by Madison Area Care for the Homeless or Mach 1 Health, and Authorizing the City to Execute a Contract with Mach 1 Health to Perform These Services, Drawing on Available CARES Act Funds to Help Finance Them. We have a registered speaker. And then we have an item with introduction made from the floor, which is Legislative File Number 74189, Amending the 2022 Public Health Operating Budget to Accept Funds from the Wisconsin Department of Health, DHS, to Expand Syringe Services and Harm Reduction. Recommended action would be to refer to Finance Committee.
Okay, so hold on, but we're almost there. Are there other items that alders wish to have excluded from the consent agenda at this time? Alder Wahili?
Item Number 5170642.
All right.
Update from the work group.
All right, so item 51, any other items that alders would like to have excluded from the consent agenda? Alder Paulson?
Perhaps you'll get to it in a second, but it looks like there's a registrant on item 13, I think?
Yes, we will also be excluding item 13.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are any other items that alders wish to have excluded? Alder Viver? No? Oh, okay. All right, seeing no other hands up, let me just run through that again. So items six through 16 are public hearings. Items 42, 59, and 65 are extra-majority items. On item 58, the recommendation is approval. On item 61, the recommendation is approval. And we will exclude items nine, 13, 20, 51, and 61. All right, Alder Curry, a motion? Oh, sorry. Oh, hold on. Alder Harrington McKinney, did you have something else?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I just want a clarification. For item number 61, since we do have a registrant, will that still remain on the exclusion? Because I have a question related to that.
Yes, it's, there's a registrant, it's excluded.
Okay, thank you.
All right, now Alder Curry?
Move to approve consent agenda.
Consent agenda is moved and seconded. Is there any objection? Oh, Alder Carter?
I just wanted to note again that I'm recusing myself from 62. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Alder Carter. All right, so it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda? Seeing none. Then the consent agenda is adopted. And we will go on to public comment, starting with item 13, which is amending sections of Chapter 28 to allow dwelling units in mixed-use buildings in certain residential districts. We have one registrant, Linda Lenhertz from District 6. I believe Linda is online. Go ahead, Linda.
Star 6 to unmute, Linda.
Hi, thank you. This ordinance change would allow mixed-use buildings in various non-single-family residential districts. It was passed at Plan Commission as part of the consent agenda. And allowing mixed use in these districts does not have much of an immediate impact since there are currently few non-residential uses that are permitted uses. What could have an impact is the change not mentioned in this, in Legis. title, which is allowing commercial building forms in these residential districts. A change in a zoning district's uses does not mean that the building form must change. The zoning code rewrite that was adopted in 2013 made clear that the allowed uses were separate from the allowed building forms. Currently, the building forms used for small and large apartment buildings in residential areas need to have a building form that responds to the nearby residential buildings. Commercial building forms do not need to respond to nearby residential buildings. Essentially, a building appropriate for a traditional shopping street could be plopped down in the midst of a residential neighborhood. Should people living in these districts or the immediate neighbors, since these are often small properties, have the right to live in an area that has more of a homey feel rather than a business district feel to it? The ordinances for these residential districts generally state that the district purpose is to stabilize and protect the essential characteristics and ensure that new buildings, in addition to existing buildings, are designed with sensitivity to their context. The 1970s-era buildings downtown have long been decried as inappropriate, including in the downtown plan. Commercial building forms in residential districts, I would venture to say, would also someday be similarly criticized. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no other registrants on this item. Are there any questions for our registrant? Seeing none, thank you. And we will go on then to item 20, which is entity reorganization Creative Grocer Concepts DBA, Jennifer Street Market. It's a Class A beer license, and it's removing one officer from the license. Our registrant is Stephen McKenzie of District 6.
There is no one by that name in the attendee list.
We have him here. Go ahead.
Hi, just like to introduce myself. I'm Stephen McKenzie. I've owned the Jennifer Street Market for 43 and a half years with my business partner, who, at the age of 70, on her birthday, retired after 43 years of working with us together at the store. And I guess that's why I'm here, because I'm all that's left. That's not, that's not true. We've got, we've got kids coming into the store that will be slowly replacing this person when he decides to retire. But, you know, I'm just here to answer any questions that are any concerns that you might have of it. I have been the licensed agent for the entire scope of the store, having beer and wine. And, you know, I'm just wondering if there's any questions I can answer for anybody. But I do see the story continuing very much on the same path that it's been for many years, and hopefully improving every year.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for our registrant? Seeing none, let me just thank you for creating the Jennifer Street Market and the many, many years it has served our community.
Thank you. I appreciate all my customers and my neighbors. It is a great place to be.
Well, I count myself amongst an irregular customer, so thank you.
We look forward to your next time there.
Thanks.
Thanks again.
Appreciate you being here. All right, then our next item is item 61, which is extending the provision of onsite supportive services to users of the city's urban campground at 3202 Dairy Drive by Mach 1 Health, and authorizing the city to execute a contract. Our only registrant wishing to speak is Tammy Ennis of District 16. We have Tammy online?
Tammy, there should be a prompt to unmute.
Tammy, you have to unmute yourself on your, there you go.
I did.
Go ahead.
Sorry. So the only thing I really wanted to say was, you know, we haven't, we haven't had any problems with anything going on down there. My only concern really is, is the cleanliness of it. It seems like it's gotten pretty, pretty junked up over there. There are a lot of vehicles now parking on the street with people living in the vehicles and running long extension cords under the fences into the campground. Is there anything going to be done about that?
So Tammy, at this point, you, this is your chance to speak to the council on the issue?
Yep.
And so it's not a back-and-forth question-and-answer kind of a thing?
Oh, okay. So that would be my only concern with the extension of it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for our registrant? Alder Harrington McKinney, did you have a question?
I don't have a question of the speaker. I just have a question related to the overall update. So I don't know what that would go to.
We'll take it up after we do public comment, Alder.
Okay, so no, I don't have any questions related to that.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any questions for our registrant? Seeing none. Then that, I believe, is everyone we have for public comment. Let me just refresh, just in case. All right, so that takes us to the end of our public comment. And thank you to everybody who joined us tonight. And we will go then to item nine, which is Legis. 73471, Amending Tables in the Madison General Ordinances to Increase Fees. President, or Vice President Curry, a motion, please?
Move to adopt.
It's moved and seconded to adopt. Alder Wahili, you had requested separation on this. Do you have questions for staff?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
All right, go ahead.
So this item has two areas. One is to increase fee, and the other one is to allow... No, just listen.
Go ahead, Alder.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
So I just want to see the impact of the fee for the residents. As we all know, you know, due to pandemic, a lot of the residents are going through some financial, you know, problem, and increasing the fee will also be detrimental to their, to paying those fees. So I'm just curious as what will be the impact and how that increasing the fee from 300 to 500 will have impact on the residents.
Thank you, Alder. We have Katie Bannon here tonight. And Katie, I'm not sure if the alders have had a chance to meet you in person. Do you want to introduce yourself and then answer the alder's question?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Hi, I'm Katie Bannon, the zoning administrator. I have met some of you over Zoom and a few in person. So I appreciate the opportunity to meet you like this. Hopefully, next time I can actually join you in person in council chambers. So this is a couple different changes. Last year, we worked with the Zoning Board of Appeals to evaluate fees and other procedural changes related to variances. The fee that were specifically, the question was about, was last updated in the 1990s. So since that time, costs have risen quite a bit. We thought it was time for an update to reconsider whether that fee was appropriate. So it's currently $300. As we looked at the fee, there are many costs involved. So there's postage to mail notices to owners and occupants within 200 feet. And depending on where a variance is requested, that can be hundreds to thousands of mailed notices that have to go out. We put a notice in the newspaper to publish. We also have printing costs related to administering variances, staff time to deliver packets to Zoning Board of Appeals members, staff to site visits, analysis of whether it's appropriate to grant an exception to our zoning code laws through a variance. We do a staff report, and then there's actually a public hearing. Another thing we looked at was just reasonableness in general. And one of the things I think that's important to understand about variances is these are really major projects. It's a new construction building, hotel, a new house, major additions. These aren't small projects that someone's asking for variance for. So in the scheme of the entire cost of the project, $500 is really pretty insignificant when most of these are in the tens of thousands of dollars, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars as far as a construction project. And I think the last main thing we considered was we looked at other communities in the area to consider what their fees are for variances. And we found that 500 would be very reasonable, right in line with what's currently charged in other municipalities. So Sun Prairie is $600. Dane County is $500. Fitchburg is $585. Wanakee is $475. The only one we found that was lower is Middleton is currently $300. So charging an appropriate fee gives some people a stake in actually considering whether they want to submit for a variance. Sometimes we have people that will just apply, well, I wanted this, and it costs so little that it's just worth me applying and having the board consider it because I would rather to be able to build it closer to the property line, for example. So we thought $500 was a reasonable fee, considering all the costs that go into the project, into the variances. And I don't think that fee even fully covers all of our staff time, but would provide some benefit, helping us pay for some of those costs. I'm happy to answer other questions.
Alder, do you have additional questions?
Yes, yes, thank you. So, thank you, Katie. And from what I'm understanding is these are bigger projects, not small projects that are maybe for home improvement, but this is our, like you said, it's a big project, right? Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and the other question I have is, in the ordinance says fee changes are estimated to increase revenue by 17,000. Can you elaborate on that? What does that mean?
Yeah, so we just did an analysis, and I'm sorry, I should have pulled that up before I started speaking here, of how many we have a year. I would estimate we have usually less than 15 variance cases a year. And so I'm thinking that's the math that was done there. 15 times an additional $200 for about $3,000 more a year. It sounded like that, the fee analysis said it would be a little bit more. Oh, I, actually, I'm sorry, I'm realizing now what that includes. There's some other changes to fees, like, for example, zoning letters, which are letters that underwriters often ask us to write about zoning on a property. So there's a small fee bump there, clarifying some other fees. But really, as far as overall revenue, it would be pretty minimal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm complete.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Carter, did you have questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. Katie, you mentioned that this amount is miniscule for the large projects that are, let's say, in the millions, right? But then you also said something about it wouldn't affect smaller projects. Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, so for variances, we're really in zoning, not looking at things like an interior remodel. It's someone who's building something new construction, either an addition or a new structure. And generally, those are going to cost... And generally, those are going to cost quite a bit amount of money beyond some of the smaller home improvement projects someone might make at a house. So in the scheme of those scale of projects, it's the $500 would be relatively small percentage.
So when you say, you said interior, but if someone was adding, let's say, a sun room or an additional whatever, family room, let's say, then that would not affect them? Is that what you're saying? I just want to make sure.
For a building addition, they could potentially ask for variance for a building addition. However, particularly with construction costs today, but even prior to COVID, the cost for an addition is substantial in comparison to $500.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to ask questions. So Item 9 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of Item 9? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of Item 9. And we'll go on to Item 13, which is Legis 73472, amending sections of Chapter 28 of the Madison General Ordinances to allow dwelling units in mixed-use buildings in certain residential districts. Vice President Curry?
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Are there questions for staff on Item 13? Seeing no questions for staff, is there any discussion? Alder, Carter, did you have a question?
Just have a question for staff to give a brief overview of this, if they're available.
Absolutely. Katie, is that you also?
That's me as well.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so this is just a change, I think as the speaker mentioned, we're not changing what's permitted or conditional within residential districts, but we're acknowledging the fact that there are a very limited list of non-residential uses that are currently allowed within residential districts as conditional uses. So they're going through the plan commission process to have that level of review. So these are things like places of worship, daycares. Again, they're already allowed. So this is a change just for something that I think was really probably missed or just not considered as part of the big zoning code rewrite in 2012, which added some more form-based standards into our code. And this is the idea that if someone has a place of worship, for example, like St. John's Lutheran, and they want to add multifamily above, that that should be something that we think would make sense to be able to allow within that zoning district. Those uses are already allowed. We're not changing the number of units that would be allowed, the setbacks, anything else, other than saying, okay, these uses are allowed and could be combined into the same building. Again, still as a conditional use, as it's already done, including those form, different building forms, again, is, I think, something that was just missed because we already allow something like a daycare, which would be more appropriate with a different form than a multifamily building or a single-family house. So making sure that the forms actually match the uses that are already allowed as part of this change.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other questions? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of Item 13? Seeing no objection, record a unanimous vote in favor of Item 13. And we will move on to Item Number 20, which is Legis 72066, the entity reorganization at Jennifer Street Market. Vice President Curry, a motion, please.
Move to place on file without prejudice.
Moved and seconded. Alder Viver.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move an alternate motion to grant.
Motion, is there a second for the motion to grant? Moved and seconded to grant. Alder Viver, do you wish to speak?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mayor. Just to explain the situation here from the Alcohol License Review Committee, I'm sure it's confusing to many of you when you see the legislative history for this item. What in fact happened is Jennifer Street Market filed for entity reorganization simply as Mr. McKenzie testified to remove his former business partner from the alcohol license upon her retirement. The reason why the recommendation before us this evening is to place on file without prejudice is simply because the license holders never appeared at an ALRC meeting. So you see in the legislative history, our June meeting, July meeting, August meeting, we re-referred this item. And then finally, in September, after re-referring this item again three times, we decided that perhaps they aren't interested in this anymore. They hadn't been apparently either responding or understanding the email correspondence from the city clerk's office. So thus, the recommendation to place on file without prejudice. I did speak with the license holder prior to the meeting, and he explained and apologized for misunderstanding that their appearance was required at the ALRC. And so I think this is very non-controversial. And again, urge your support then to grant the license tonight, notwithstanding the ALRC's previous recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any questions for staff? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the motion is to grant. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of granting the license? Seeing no objection, that item is granted. And that will take us then to Item 51, which is Legis 70642, substitute establishing a common council prohibited harassment and/or discrimination policy. Vice President Curry, a motion, please.
Move to re-refer to Common Council Executive Committee.
Moved and seconded to re-refer. Alder Wahilihi, did you have questions for staff?
Yes. Sorry. Yes, so there was a work group that was created, and we would like to get the updates of, you know, how the progress of this particular ordinance. I know they have met a couple of times and just to know where things are standing because, you know, as we are going into budget season and then end of the year, it's going to take a lot of time. So just to know where things are. And I know the group has met a couple of times, just so like to get updates.
Thank you, Alder. Vice President Curry, you look like you want to offer that.
Yes.
Go ahead.
So it is true, the subcommittee to establish a code of conduct has met twice now, the last, latest meeting being this evening at 4:30. The work has so far included a review of the former draft, I think it was anti-discrimination and harassment policy. And the subcommittee was developed in order to have a broader lens on that. So conversation is about including not just elected officials, but city appointees, those who are in contracts, and wanting to elaborate on the city and all of its groups, BCCs, entities, that we all want to be treated and will treat those we are doing business with respect and provide not only steps on when that has been violated, but also resources in hopes that it will be a last resort, that we would have to result to any sanctions or consequences for unresolved issues.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other questions or discussion on this item? Alder Wahilihi?
So my question is, so it will be referred to the executive committee on November's? Can you share the dates again?
The motion doesn't include dates, but presumably to the next CCEC meeting.
Okay, can I request to bring back to the council in November, the first meeting of November?
Alder, I think you can certainly make that request.
Yes.
If you want to make a substitute motion to include the dates, you could do that. But you could also just request that the committee take action and send it back to us.
Yeah, so the action I would like to request is to bring back to the council either the first meeting of the council or subsequent meetings in November for a vote.
I don't think that's a proper motion. I don't think you can require the council to vote on something in a motion.
No, but, you know, the motion before was to bring back to the council on October 11th. Now, the committee met twice, the Alder...
Alder, I understand your intent.
Yes.
But the motion isn't a proper one, so you have two options.
Okay.
But you also have several other Alders in the queue.
Okay.
So you might want to let the discussion go on. But if you, you can either just simply request to CCEC that they bring this back at the appropriate time, or if you want to make it formal, you can make a substitute motion that includes whatever dates you want, which then would, you'd have to get a second and it would have to, that would replace the motion. So let me...
Okay, so you want to go to the queues and then...
Go to the rest of the queue. Alder Carter?
Just like to get a clarification that this subcommittee is looking at including not only the common council members, but the BCCs and the contract, is that our vendors or contract employees? Can I get a clarification on that?
Alder, Carter, I believe that it is the council, the committee members, and contract employees.
And wouldn't contract employees be under the purview of HR?
We're going to ask the city attorney here.
Oh, okay.
Vice President Curry could also speak to this, but the discussion tonight involved some potential draft policies that would include Alders, the mayor, and BCC members, and noting that, you know, city employees are all subject to the APMs that are in place.
Does that answer your question, Alder Carter?
Just, just one moment, Mayor Alder, sorry, Attorney Haas, so that would eliminate contract employees?
Yes, for this particular, at least the drafts that have been before the subcommittee so far.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to call out that the recommendation from CCEC, and it is in the agenda, was to re-refer to the second CCEC meeting in February of next year. And just to speak to that, I would still support that motion, assuming that is what's in front of us, or maybe that needs to get clarified. But I would not be in support of continuing to bring it back until the work is completed.
Thank you very much, Alder Foster. You're absolutely correct. I did miss the agenda note, so I appreciate that clarification. And just to be clear, Vice President Curry, that was your motion, right? So the motion before us is to re-refer to the second Common Council Executive Committee meeting in February of 2023. So that's the motion. Is there further discussion or questions? Not seeing, oh, Alder Wahilihi?
So this will be referred to CCEC in February, correct?
That's the current motion, yes.
Okay, so I wouldn't be supporting that. I think the work has been done, and the committee has some draft, which I have seen. It's almost to its work, even though it's way different than what I proposed in the beginning of this ordinance. However, you know, having something in place will help the future Alders to have something in place for their orientation in the future. So I'm wondering what will happen between now and February to wait that long while already the work has been done almost to 80%. You know, Karen has worked on it, and the committee has worked on it. And it's just a matter of looking into it and seeing it and to make it into a document. So I'm just, I don't know how to ask the question and who should ask, but I would like to know what will happen between now and February.
Well, Alder, your question is asked. If anybody wants to speak to it, they're certainly welcome to. Alder Curry?
Thank you, Mayor. So to my recollection, and thank you, Alder Foster, for catching that I missed it on the agenda, even though it was bolded, February was a benchmark, not, I can confidently say that we will likely be finished with the work by then, but considering some of the dynamics that you already alluded to, being budget season, being some of the CCEC meeting and being canceled. And so I think I was pushed out by saying that we would absolutely have the work done by February, but I can confidently say we'll be doing that much more quicker. So one of the actions from tonight's meeting, which we would invite you to attend the next one on October 25th, would be to look over a revised draft based on comments we provided today, and then request of the CCEC chair to provide a update at the October 27th CCEC. We don't, there won't be enough time between agenda preparations to get the actual draft on the agenda to be reviewed by CCEC, but that would be the recommendation to bring that action back to CCEC at a meeting further along in November. I believe it's November 10th.
Thank you, Alder. Things are moving around. Alder Carter?
I would just like to have in writing, this is a suggestion, not an amendment, that contract of employees of the city of Madison is not included in this document. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Carter. I think members of the subcommittee can take that under advisement. Alder Fair?
Yeah, I'm not on the subcommittee, but I'm attending the meetings and helping out. I don't think we have to put that in the language. I think that's well-understood, and there hasn't been conversation or discussion about contract employees. So I don't think there's need for that. Come to the meetings, if you like, to voice your opinions on any of those, any issues, but I think we're good and we, I shouldn't say we, but whatever. I think the committee is hearing you loud and clear.
Thank you, Alder. Just remind us collectively that you should address your remarks to the chair. Alder Carter?
Well, Mayor, I'm going to direct this to you because I heard contract workers mention, so that's why I said what I said. If it was a mistake, then the speaker should say I misspoke, but that's what I heard. And I just want to make sure that contract workers are under the preview, purview, excuse me, of HR and not this common council. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I think that everyone is clear on that point. I have no other Alders in the queue. The motion is to refer to the second Common Council Executive Committee in February of 2023. Is there objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of referral?
I abstain.
Alder Carter will be noted as abstaining. Alder Wahilihi?
Not from me.
Wishes to be recorded as voting no. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Abstain.
Will abstain as well. Okay, with two abstentions and one no, the item still passes. And we will move on to Item 61, which is Legis 7350... item 61, which is Legisstar 73500, extending the provision of onsite supportive services to users of the city's urban campground on Dairy Drive by Mach One Health Incorporated and authorizing the city to execute a contract with them drawing upon CARES Act funds. Vice President Curry, a motion, please.
Move to refer to the, nope. Might need help with this.
This, this one is to grant, I believe. Yes, this is, the motion is for approval.
Okay. Move to that, approve.
Moved and seconded by Alder Figaro Cole, sorry, Alder Conklin, to approve. We can fight over who gets to have their name as the second. Are there questions for staff on item 61? Seeing, oh, Alder Harrington McKinney, questions for staff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have no question of, question related to the funding portion, but I would like to have an update from staff about the, and I don't know if the director's there, but anyway, an update from staff about the...
Let's get an update from staff. We'll start there. And Mr. O'Keefe is with us.
Alder and, and members, I prepared a draft and entered it into Legisstar dated October 6th that provides an overview of the work that's, the history of and the work that's been going on at the Dairy Drive campground. Would you like me to review that, if you, or do you have questions about it?
Well, my question really is just an update. So we had a speaker earlier talked about the cleanliness of the campground, but I just wanted to know, because I went by there and I didn't have an appointment, but, you know, what's happening there? I mean, is everything functioning there? Any challenges there? Any of that? Just as an update.
Yep. So all of the above is, is true. We've, we've been in operation there since the middle of November of last year. That campground, you might recall, is set up to serve 30 campers at one point in time or at any point in time. In, in the time that it's been operating, it has served, as of the writing of this, of this memo, it had served 50 people and 20 of them had, have left the campground and exited to permanent housing, which is a, really a pretty remarkable outcome, given that those that have chosen to use the campground are, are people who have, generally speaking in the past, shunned other shelter services and other, other types of services. So that 20 of 50 have left for permanent housing is a, is a pretty good outcome. Community development staff continue to have regular meetings with the onsite service provider. Every other week, we bring in to those conversations representatives from the Madison Police Department. The agencies have chosen to call monthly meetings with local business owners and residents. I can tell you that, that over the, the course of, of the last six months or more, that the tenor of those meetings, both the, the staff meetings with the service provider and the agency meetings with neighborhood residents has, has calmed quite dramatically. I like to think that that's a, a sign that, that things are going reasonably well. I think the nature of the, of the population that is being served at, at this facility suggests that there will always be opportunities for, for challenges to arise. And I think, and I point out in, in the memo that, that the mere turnover, the mere success of the work to find housing for people who use the campground, bring new users, bring new campers, sometimes with a different set of, of challenges. So there's, there's that constant churning and I certainly would not suggest to you tonight that there are no problems, no issues, no challenges. But, but I think that the, the system that's in place, the services that are in place are working quite well. The collaborations between service providers and, and city staff, including emergency, law enforcement and, and fire department staff have improved over time and I'm, I'm generally, I'm generally pleased with how things are going.
Thank you, Jim. And so oftentimes, we just need to hear because we have not only people who are looking, looking or viewing visually, we really like to hear about what's happening and it's good to have that kind of update. Is there any leadership that's forming out of that group? Sometimes, I know at the campsite, they were forming informal leadership. Is that rising to the top? Is that encouraging? Are you seeing that kind of, within the residents there?
So, so I would characterize it maybe a little bit differently. I would, I would note that there's evidence of, of community forming, of cohesion among members. Again, that's influenced in, in some regard to the fact that people continue to move through that, that facility. So relationships that are, that are developed are sometimes broken by the, by virtue of people moving out. But, you know, it's a much calmer environment in, in many ways than it was at the outset and, and I attribute most of that to the, to the presence of onsite support services at, at the levels that we're supporting out there.
Okay. How many staff are there?
The, the contract supports, I believe, eight FTE positions. That includes staff that are assigned to property management responsibilities as well as onsite supportive services.
Okay. Thank you. I'm complete.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Carter, did you have a question for staff?
I don't.
And can I just, any Alder that is within the sound of my voice, could you either turn your camera on or coming back in the room? Because we are not technically in quorum, even though I know that the Alders are in the room. I can't see you and that means that I do not know you're here. Thank you very much, Alder Foster. We're safe again. All right, Alder Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Jim, we got some correspondence from residents that are, that reference, for lack of a better word, litter around the facility and campers that are on the street. Can you address that, especially the trash that is propping, cropping up around the facility?
Sure, Alder Carter. So, so that was the subject of a neighborhood meeting that I attended some time ago and part of the, part of the conversation, and it was at times a difficult one because you'll note that, that the shelters are quite small. They don't have a lot of, of, of space inside them to store possessions. And so the, the gist of that conversation was something to the effect that what is some people's litter or trash are other people's belongings. And as there isn't a lot of room to store possessions indoors, people are storing things outside of the, the cabin. So it was a point that was, I mean, there's a difference between litter and trash and, and people's possessions. And it was an issue that property management staff promised to, to take back and, and pay attention to. If, if residents don't feel that that's being handled adequately, I would strongly encourage them to raise that in the, in those monthly meetings when they have the opportunity to do so. With respect to, to parking and camping on the street, that's, that's a very different matter. We made clear at the outset that we would enforce, we, the city would enforce parking ordinances at this location, just as we do every place else. And so if there are incidents where people are, are living out of their cars, that is not allowed in, in the city. Again, it's an issue that, that has been brought up. It's an issue that onsite staff tell us that they are addressing. There had been an occasion where somebody had connected, because there, there is power to the cabins at this site, that there had been an extension cord connecting to, from a, from a vehicle to one of, one of the cabins and that was addressed. So we encourage, just as we do anywhere in the city where people observe violations of ordinances, clear violations of ordinances, to report those. They have the ability to contact Madison Police or they have the ability to reach out to the property management, not just at the, at the monthly meetings, but staff there have, have really made a concerted effort to communicate to business owners and residents about how to contact them and they've made that as easy to do as, as they possibly can. I, I don't believe that, that those problems, if they're occurring, are widespread.
Alder Carter, we've lost your audio, if you're speaking. There you go.
Jim, you brought up their, the residents' possessions and I was looking towards more like actual trash bottles. Is there adequate dumpsters or adequate containers that the residents can use? And are we looking at actually doing a sweep of the area to make sure that real trash, not possessions, are picked up?
Yes, Alder, there, there are trash and recycling receptacles available onsite. Property management is responsible for monitoring the site and the surrounding area and you can be sure that tomorrow morning I will reach out to that staff and, and let them know that concerns were raised tonight and, and ask them to redouble their efforts to address them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney, additional questions for staff?
Not for staff. And my question is asking the mayor, would the Alder, does the Alder of the district have any input in terms of constituent complaints or satisfaction, if she'd like to comment?
All right, thank you, Alder. We certainly invite the Alder to comment if she'd like. She's capable. Alder Figaro Cole, did you have questions for staff?
Just again, to clarify, so if people have complaints like the ones presented today, there, there is a mechanism for them to bring those to the, to the staff, correct?
Yes, there is.
So, yeah, just wanted to clarify that there is, they can, there are meetings, there are different activities, they can make a phone call and, and those issues will be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I don't see any other questions. So it is moved and seconded. We'll go to discussion. Alder Curry, did you wish to speak to the issue?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. To respond to Alder Harrington McKinney's question, yes, I have been invited to all of the meetings, or at least been made aware of them, and also can provide input on what I'm hearing from constituents in the 16th District or those who are interested in the campground. And since its opening, I have had little to no communication that has been negative.
Thank you, Alder. Is there additional discussion on this item? Seeing no discussion, it's been moved and seconded to approve. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we record a unanimous vote of approval on item 61. That takes us to the end of our exclusion list. So now it is time for any introductions from the floor. Alder Fair, I believe you have one?
No, it was covered in the consent agenda.
You included it in the consent agenda?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Clerk has it. We're good. Are there any other introductions from the floor or announcements? Seeing none. Alder Foster, it's your turn.
I would move adjournment.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing no objection, we are adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.
Night.